We need that info.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 28, 2025 Troy City Council Meeting. This evening, we are honored to have Associate Pastor Matt Schuler from Faith Troy to provide our invocation. So please stand if you are able and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor Baker, thank you. There's a lot of joy in the room tonight, so I'm excited to pray. I'll invite you all to pray with me. Lord God, Heavenly Father, I give you thanks this night especially for the wisdom that you've given to our council, to our mayor. I pray, Lord, that you would continue to move them forward in what's best for all who live here in Troy. Lord, especially I give you thanks today for the wisdom and intellect of our students, the first place Bemis Elementary School taking not just best in state, but best in nation. Thanks for all the ways that their parents, teachers, and educators pour into them. Lord, give us all your grace all the time. This we pray through the Holy Spirit in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the role of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. I will call the July 28, 2025 Troy City Council Meeting to order and ask for the roll call from Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Here.
Councilmember Chanda?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gunn?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
All present this evening. First up are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We do have one this evening. C1 is the certificate of recognition and congratulations to Bemis Elementary School, crowned 2025 National Math Pentathlon Champions. And if you children would come join me at the podium, it'll probably take 15 minutes to get us all over here. If the kids are coming up with anything, I'd like to read this.
All right.
The trick, if you can't see over the podium, then you should go to the side, okay? Make sure everyone can see her face. It's super important.
Come to the back. All right.
All right, everybody. I am extremely excited to read this proclamation into the record here and celebrate these students who, as you heard, were the 2025 National Math Pen- I can't say Pen- is it Pentaph- Pentathlon? I don't know what's wrong with me, but Pentathlon. Thank you so much. First place gold trophy. That's awesome. I know you had a fun banquet that I couldn't attend. I know Councilmember Chanda, I think, was there.
I did.
I heard the food was excellent. So thanks to all the parents who went out. But congratulations, students. This is really wonderful. I'm going to read this into the record so everybody can hear how wonderful it is. So again, this is a certificate of recognition and congratulations for Bemis Elementary School, crowned the 2025 National Math Pentathlon Champions. Whereas, in an extraordinary demonstration of teamwork, critical thinking, and academic excellence, Bemis Elementary School has been awarded the 2025 National Math Pentathlon First Place Gold Trophy. Where's that trophy? There it is. I knew it was here. I don't want to block anybody's face, but it's pretty cool. You can block my face, maybe. Here, let's see. I don't want to- am I blocking you? There we go. Does that work? All right, good enough. Cindy's like, no, don't do that. But the recognition reflects Bemis Elementary School's exceptional performance across all three competition divisions, solidifying its place at the top of a field that includes thousands of students from across the United States. And whereas, the gold trophy is presented annually to the highest-scoring team in the nation based on cumulative performance across all grade levels and requires teams to include boys and girls from five different grade levels to meet tournament game-monitor quotas. And whereas this year, Bemis Elementary School not only met those rigorous standards, but achieved the highest team score recorded in the last 24 years of the competition for Michigan. Over two-thirds, that's a good call. Over two-thirds of the students earned awards at the national level, and they received the highest score ever recorded for Michigan in a national tournament. And whereas this incredible achievement was the result of months of hard work by over 60 student Pentaph- Pentaph- now I can't say pentathletes. Pentathlete, obviously, I'm saying, across three divisions. There was Division One, which is kindergarten and first grade, Division Two, second and third grade, Division Three, fourth and fifth grade, and the volunteer coordinator, of course, for the three divisions, was also part of it, our Bemis School Staff Coordinator. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council and the City of Troy commend the Bemis Elementary School Math Pentathlon Team for their fine efforts and extend this token of affection, which you'll see in a sec, and admiration in which you are regarded in this city. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Troy joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the Bemis Elementary School Math Pentathlon Team as the 2025 National Math Pentathlon Champions, a reflection of the strength and spirit of our community. This proclamation is signed this 28th day of July 2025. I signed it as the mayor. All members of our Troy City Council have also signed it. And we also have signed certificates for all of you students who were there, that each have your name personalized on them. So we're excited to present this to you. Ms. Stewart has those, and we'll hand them to an adult probably on the way out. So congratulations. Now I'm going to do another round of applause and say congratulations to all of you. Did you get a picture, Cindy? Did you get enough pictures? We're good. All right. Who wants to say? You want someone- is there a coach that wants to speak and say a few words? Go ahead. You hold that?
Thank you. You go ahead.
So, good evening, all. Thank you, Mayor Ethan Baker, City Council Members, Community Affairs Director, Cindy Stewart, and the community for giving us this opportunity to recognize these incredible achievements of our young mathematicians. So this year, we have- we had an amazing 62 math pentathletes from our school who took part in this math pentathlon tournaments across all three divisions. Okay? So they didn't just show up, they shined. There was- I'll just give a stat of what they did, okay? We had six of our students become Hall of Famers, meaning they won all the five games without any defeats. And then we had seven gold medalists, nine silver medalists, 12 bronze medalists, and 10 honorable mentions, and including 16 pentathlete awards. So which means they showed exceptional skill and sportsmanship throughout the competition at all levels. So beyond the medals and awards, what makes this achievement truly special is the dedication, teamwork, resilience that the students demonstrated throughout the season. It's a, like, almost close to a six, seven-month season. See, I've seen them solve complex problems with focus and creativity and also debate over game rules like real liars. Okay? See, as we celebrate their accomplishments today, we are also proud to know that today's young mathematicians are growing into tomorrow's thoughtful, analytical, and engaged citizens. So of course, none of this would be possible without the incredible village of supporters. A huge thank you to all our parent volunteers, fellow coaches, Sai Priya, Murali, and Gopal, see, who have given their evenings and weekends and specifically towards the end of the season, complete two weeks of dedication for this. A special shout-out to Lijot Tomanna, who has been a pillar behind this pentathlon program at Bemis for several years. And our heartfelt thanks to our school principal, Harleen Singh, and staff coordinator Stephanie Sims. See, their encouragement and support have meant so much to the team. So tonight, we celebrate not just a group of students who excel at math, but a group of young thinkers, problem solvers, and teammates who make us incredibly proud. Thank you again for Mayor Baker and the City Council for honoring us. Thank you very much.
All right, everybody. Thank you. Great job. Congratulations. You're making our city so proud. We're all so proud of you, right?
Yes.
Go back out.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but if you also want to sneak out, that's fine, too. Just do it quietly, because we're in a procession here.
Literally like my two dogs from my- three in my subdivision.
He was by the electrical thing, and I'm like, oh, that's where you're coming from.
I'm like, and then you-.
And I told her, you can undress her, it's a suitcase, and two of their brothers, and...
I couldn't see.
This little guy.
Yeah, I went.
He was fingers and...
Nice mate. For that six years.
I know. It's gonna break.
You know, Marianne Perkins, standing for me at church.
A Catholic.
Only get there for like 15 years.
I can't even say Pentathlon.
Six kids.
Right with you. It's crazy.
I felt like, wow.
It's crazy. People want to be in our school.
Scrod it off. Sorry, I'm private.
All right, I guess we're still on the record. All right, that concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have no carryover items this evening, no public hearings, so we move on to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We have no one signed up for those comments, because we have some sign up later. So no need for council or administration reply. We have no postponed items this evening, so we move on to regular business. First up, I want is board and committee appointments. I have no mayoral appointments this evening, but I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Gunn for city council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. We resolve that Troy City Council appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees. To Historic District Commission, for term expires on 3/1/2028, Sandy Friesen. To Parks and Recreation, for the term expires 7/30/2026, Matt Jansen. To Zoning Board of Appeals, for term expires 4/30/2028, Dave Ostenbacher and Aaron Green.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Gunn, supported by Councilmember Hamilton. Wow, those doors are partially closed. Something we don't often see. We'll give them one minute. That's fine. As long as the city attorney is okay with it. All right. Very good. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Gunn, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that we approve the appointments made by City Council of Sandy Friesen for the term expiring Mayf- excuse me, March 1, 2028, to the Historic District Commission, Matt Jansen to the Parks and Recreation Board for the term expiring July 31, 2026, and to the Zoning Board of Appeals, David Eisenbacher and Aaron Green, both for terms expiring April 30, 2028. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. We thank them for their continued service. And next up is I2, Board and Committee nominations. No mayoral name of nominations this evening, and I don't believe there are any city council nominations either. We have no requests for closed session, so we'll move on to I4, Contract Extension, HAAS Alert, Safety Cloud Advanced Collision Prevention System, Fire Department, and that'll be introduced by our Fire Chief, Pete Hollinger.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I thought everybody was here to hear me talk about HaS Alerting. I guess not. Yeah, I bring before you tonight contract extension for HaS Alerting, and just wanted to briefly touch on what is- what that is. Back in 2022, we brought it to City Council, the original contract, which was a three-year contract for it. It's an alerting system that's put in all our fire vehicles. So when a firefighter turns on the emergency warning lights, it sends a signal up to the satellites in the cloud systems and then talks to programs like Waze, Apple Maps, and then several of the auto manufacturers are now incorporating into their navigation systems. And what it does is alerts the driver that they're either approaching a emergency scene or an emergency vehicle is approaching them. So it's giving them advanced warning, which, as we know, newer vehicles are getting more soundproof, people are busy doing many things when they're driving now, so it's an extra layer of protection for our first responders out there. And over the three years of us using this contract, we've been averaging about 4,000 notifications a month with it to drivers. Now, the big thing with it is, we don't know, did it notify somebody who took a different route, maybe was paying attention more, you know, and didn't crash into our vehicles? But, so it's one of those extra layers that we're adding in just to protect our first responders. The other thing is, we've worked really closely with this company since their initial development, even longer than the three-year contract. And because of that, with the new contract we're proposing tonight, they're actually going to give us an additional 13% off the rate, because we're going to continue that relationship as they move forward with new products and develop things to hopefully make it safer for all the first responders out there. So take any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Mayor Pro Tem Gunn?
Frequently, when you're driving and using your phone as your GPS, as your map, you'll get a notification of either a crash ahead, or maybe there's a police watching your speed.
Right.
Does it notify?
Correct. So when- once the emergency lights are turned on the vehicle, it will notify roughly about 30 seconds, vehicles 30 seconds ahead, and then once they park the vehicle, the GPS says after, I can't remember the full duration, it's maybe 30, 45 seconds, it says, okay, that's where an emergency is, so it drops like a pin on the map. And then Waze actually will route vehicles away from that scene. So, and it was several years ago when we had the fire at Capital Grill at Somerset Collection, we ran a report afterwards, thinking Big Beaver Road, all that. I think we notified something like 5,000 vehicles during that incident, so hopefully people stayed away a little bit, so.
Okay. Councilmember Chanda, do you have a question? I thought I saw your-.
Yeah, so thanks, thanks, Chief. Wonderful thing, I think. So are we only talking about the fire trucks, or also the EMS vehicles and all the other emergency vehicles?
Right. Currently, it's only in the fire trucks and the fire staff vehicles. We've got it in 24 vehicles within the fire department. So it is, it is something that can be used in the police, it can be used in EMS, and towing companies are using it even, so that, I know Troy Auto Care, Donnie Hudson, who's one of our volunteers, he uses it in all his tow trucks as well, to again, give that extra layer of protection.
Yeah, it would be nice probably to, you know, equip the EMS vehicle, because they're pretty much, by definition, they're rushing, right?
Right. Big thing with EMS is them not being a city service, you know, that would have to be something they would have to sign up for and do on their own.
But yeah, it's a good concept. I mean, it's, I looked at the price of this investment, definitely.
It is available, and they could utilize it if they, yep.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, is there any evidence, just in give evaluation, that maybe HaS has communities that did not use it, and then changed to it, how they saw significant, like, a decrease in any sort of collision or anything along those lines?
Yeah, I'm sure there is. Deputy Chief Hug handles this project, and unfortunately, he couldn't attend tonight. He would probably have a little more insight on that, and I could always look into that and get that data as well.
Just curious. Another quick question was, I remember approving the technology that also stops, changes stoplights so our fire trucks can keep going. That is different than HaS, is that correct?
Correct. That is a different system. That's the Opticom system, which, again, when they activate the emergency lights with that system, it actually now changes traffic lights, green for the fire trucks, red for oncoming traffic. So that is just another layer we integrate into this. And nationally, the most dangerous thing for firefighters and for responders in general is responding to the call, is the driving. So having these extra layers put together just makes it safer, not only for our first responders, but also for the residents and those traveling through Troy, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move I4, Contract Extension, HaS Alert, Safety Cloud Advanced Collision Prevention System, Fire Department, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support. Moved by Councilmember Chamberlain, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Gunn, that we approve I4, Contract Extension, HaS Alert, Safety Cloud Advanced Collision Prevention System, Fire Department. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. That concludes regular business. Next up is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda for future or further discussion? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. That concludes regular business. Next up is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda for future or further discussion? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. If you're here for an item on the consent agenda this evening, all have been approved. That's what all the kids were here for earlier. Next up is memorandums and future council agenda items. We do have an announcement, K1, Announcement of Public Hearing, on August 11, 2025, Conditional Rezoning, JPCR 2025-002, Dash Proposed Northland Enclave, West Side of Corporate, North of Long Lake, 5455 Corporate, PIN Number 88-20-08-451-004, Section 8, From O, Office Zoning District to CB, Community Business, and MF, Multi-Family Zoning Districts. That'll be at the August 11, 2025 meeting, and it'll be a public hearing. All right, next up is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We do have a handful of people signed up this evening. As a reminder, our City Council Rules of Procedure allow you three minutes to speak. It's not a back-and-forth question-and-answer session. It's directed to all of us as a body, and we do have an opportunity after all speakers have gone to provide some reply or comments. I've learned this evening that our faithful and trusty clock broke. So you still have three minutes. Our City Clerk Dixon will be keeping track of three minutes. If possible, when there's about a minute left, she will gesture and maybe we'll see it. But when her timer goes off at three minutes, that'll be the conclusion of your time as normal. So first up is Abdullah Al-Masiri.
Hello, how are you?
Good evening.
How are you guys?
Good, thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Abdullah, the owner of the burger truck, and I stand before you today not only as a business owner, but as a member of the Troy community. I own a food truck that has been proudly serving families and visitors for the past two years in the parking lot of a local arcade. Our partnership with the arcade, rich as the owner, has created a vibrant, family-friendly environment where people can enjoy games, ice cream, and delicious food all in one place. When I purchased this food truck for $110,000, I did so under the belief that it was allowed to remain on-site, as it had been for the previous year, under different ownership. It has been, it came as a surprise to learn about the zoning ordinance that requires food trucks to be removed from the parking lot every single night during non-operational business hours. This ordinance poses a significant challenge for us. The physical logistics of us moving a fully-equipped food truck every single day are not only impractical, but they are also detrimental to our operations and to the community that we serve. I am here today to respectfully request a variance that would allow us to remain on the premises overnight. This variance will not only support a local business that has invested in this community, but also continue fostering a lively, family-oriented environment that residents and visitors come to enjoy. We have all the necessary licenses, we have passed all health and fire inspections, we are insured with general liability insurance, listing the City of Troy as a certificate holder of up to $1 million. And we are committed to maintaining a safe and welcoming space for everyone. Our presence at the arcade has brought joy to countless families. We've become a staple of this community, and removing us every single night will disrupt not only our operations, but also the experience that families have come to love. We believe that by granting this variance, the council will support, will be supporting a small business that truly enhances the culture and the economy. I thank you guys all for your time and consideration, and I am hopeful that we can work together to possibly come up with a solution. And yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you. Thank you. Any questions, or is there any?
Doesn't work like that? Not a question back and forth, but we'll have an opportunity to respond and reply.
Okay. Beautiful. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up is Joey Colby.
Hi, my name is Joey Colby Bernert. I'm a clinical social worker, as well as a graduate student at the Michigan State University College of Health and Human Medicine, 5125 Shady Creek Drive. I am here today because first and foremost, I would like to ask that all dispatches for the Troy Police Department receive a $12,000 raise and a $1,500 bonus. I had the wonderful experience of speaking with Emily when I had to report an incident last week. My work as a social worker has me interacting with law enforcement regularly. I have always been happy with the results with Troy Police and the dispatch. Second reason I am here is I am here to ask that the city work to immediately release any form of educational matter for the bond and have it communicated to the public. Town halls would be exceptionally important here. We are seeing an astounding amount of misinformation from people on social media, particularly with the utilization of AI-created text. The city has an obligation to combat misinformation. Now, the primary reason that I'm here is actually, I had to struggle saying this, is I'm here because I am worried about cryptosporidium, which is a highly chlorine-resistant parasite which can survive in well-maintained pools for up to 10 days. This presents a significant risk, especially for young children, the elderly, and individuals with compromised immune systems. I'm sure, Dr. Brooks, you know all about cryptosporidium. I would like to know what protocols are in place to test and mitigate chlorine-resistant parasites in Troy's aquatic facilities. Has the city considered adopting secondary disinfection systems such as ultraviolet or ozone treatment, which have been proven to inactivate cryptosporidium? Are there partnerships in place with the county health department or academic institutions to review emerging threats to water safety, as well as an updated practice to dealing with it? The city cannot assume that adherence to existing standards is sufficient when those standards have not caught up.
One minute.
One minute, thank you. Have not caught up with the, with the standards that are out there, and we know that chlorine-resistant pathogens are only getting stronger with climate change, so I urge the city to be proactive, not reactive, on this issue. There have been a multitude of lawsuits to municipalities, businesses, and counties as a result of cryptosporidium over the past two decades. So, and ending this, any clinician here will understand the immunological vulnerability of young adults, older adults, our young children, older adults, cancer patients to protozoan infections like cryptosporidium. I would really like to see the city develop a stronger relationship with the county health department. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Next up is Alex Carbovitz.
Good evening. Glad to see you all. So speaking of misinformation, on the city's own bond website-
and I am hopeful that we can work together to possibly come up with a solution. And yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or is there any?
Doesn't work like that, not a question back and forth. We'll have an opportunity to respond and reply.
Okay.
Everyone's got.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up is Joey Colby.
Hi, my name is Joey Colby Bernert. I'm a clinical social worker as a graduate student at the Michigan State University College of Health and Human Medicine, 5125 Shady Creek Drive. I am here today because first and foremost, I would like to ask that all dispatches for the Troy Police Department receive a $12,000 raise and a $1,500 bonus. I had the wonderful experience of speaking with Emily when I had to report an incident last week. My work as a social worker has me interacting with law enforcement regularly. I have always been happy with the results with Troy Police and the dispatch. Second reason I am here is I am here to ask that the city work to immediately release any form of educational matter for the bond and have it communicated to the public. Town halls would be exceptionally important here. We are seeing an astounding amount of misinformation from people on social media, particularly with the utilization of AI-created text. The city has an obligation to combat misinformation. Now, the primary reason that I'm here is actually, I had to struggle saying this, is I'm here because I am worried about cryptosporidium, which is a highly chlorine-resistant parasite which can survive in well-maintained pools for up to 10 days. This presents a significant risk, especially for young children, the elderly, and individuals with compromised immune systems. I'm sure, Dr. Brooks, you know all about cryptosporidium. I would like to know what protocols are in place to test and mitigate chlorine-resistant parasites in Troy's aquatic facilities. Has the city considered adopting secondary disinfection systems such as ultraviolet or ozone treatment, which have been proven to inactivate cryptosporidium? Are there partnerships in place with the county health department or academic institutions to review emerging threats to water safety as well as an updated practice to dealing with it? The city cannot assume that adherence to existing standards is sufficient when those standards have not caught up.
One minute.
One minute, thank you. Have not caught up with the, with the standards that are out there. And we know that chlorine-resistant pathogens are only getting stronger with climate change. So I urge the city to be proactive, not reactive on this issue. There have been a multitude of lawsuits to municipalities, businesses, and counties as a result of cryptosporidium over the past two decades. So, and ending this, any clinician here will understand the immunological vulnerability of young adults, older adults, or young children, older adults, cancer patients to protozoan infections like cryptosporidium. I would really like to see the city develop a stronger relationship with the county health department. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Next up is Alex Carbowis.
Good evening. Glad to see you all. So, speaking of misinformation, on the city's own bond website, the number listed right now is not what council passed two weeks ago of 137 million. It's actually 112 million. So I'm looking forward to the city being able to correct that misinformation. I'd like to tell you a little bit about me because I think you and I are going to spend some additional time. I'm going to be at more council meetings and we'll see what the future brings. My father was a General Motors employee, built this, his house in Troy in 1987. He was a tool and die maker at Fisher Body. He worked exceptionally hard and did extremely well. My grandfather fought in the Battle of the Bulge in the Luzon Islands and I'm exceptionally proud to call Troy my home. I've been extremely successful. I pay more property taxes than my dad. I love this city. Dave, you and I, I know we go back and forth. You grew up here, I grew up here. We love Troy. Ultimately, though, I feel that we do have different visions for Troy. The city is run by very competent, very caring people. But in terms of where we're at in the macroeconomic cycle, I think it is advantageous for the city to maintain its reserve balance and be very judicial with its spending. I know you see the comments on Nextdoor like I do. There are a lot of people that are against this bond. Frankly, I wish I would have ran for council this coming fall. There are even senior Dems who are on fixed incomes that are beginning to feel stretched. Troy homeowners are beginning to feel stretched and we really need to be judicious about the spending that is in front of us. Now, I know you started with that $200 million number and you've came to 137 million, but the mistake, and I keep going back to this, was bundling the capital expenditures for the library, or excuse me, the library with the capital expenditures. No one is against the city supporting the library, getting a new roof, and whatever it needs in order to function in a safe, efficient manner. And I really, like, again, if you don't think from a generational perspective that cities can change, all you have to do is drive 18 miles to the city of Detroit, which was once one of the most prosperous cities in the country. I do this, I stand here because I love Troy and I want good things for Troy. But I do think having that reserve balance and being extremely judicious with finances is incumbent upon the city. And the only reason I'm standing here and I live in Troy and I'm successful is because my father gave me numerous chances and he himself was extremely judicious with how he spent his resources and he raised me the same way. So I beseech you to sit and populate social media pages, not, I'm glad the businesses are in here in Troy and you're at the ribbon cuttings, but sit with people at their family tables and talk to them because I keep hearing from people at their family tables that they're at their limit. And we need to recognize that and acknowledge them and hear them. No one is against the city getting the resources that they need.
Thanks, Alex. Next up is David Niffen.
Good evening, folks. David Niffen, 5501 Boros, Troy, Michigan. First off, off-topic, I support and like the food truck in High Score Arcade. My boys and I, we ride bikes up there all the time. My only complaint would be is I wish Rochester Road had a sidewalk that we wouldn't have to, you know, trudge through the side of the road there through the grass. But now, back to why I came here anyway. Since the last time I was here, the bond, the bond vote was passed. But I was astounded to learn that council has authorized and potentially spent as much as $322,000 leading up to that vote on studies and preliminary analysis for this $75 million library. Seems like a ton of money to spend prior to knowing if the community even wants this or will support this in the ballot box. If that $322,000 was absolutely necessary for the quote, the design and analysis, I'd be curious to know how much was spent likewise on the library remodel quote that was stated between 20 and 30 million the year prior at a council meeting I was at in the back room here. Because where can I find that information? Because while $322,000 may pale in comparison to a $250 million budget, my summer taxes came in at five grand, which means that taxes of a like lies home like mine took 64 homes to equal that $322,000. All for an effort to see if people will support this plan. To me, it feels like gambling. In my HOA, under my leadership, we don't gamble with other people's money. So my question is this. If the voters reject this bond, are we as taxpayers just out this $322,000? Or will you, as a group, find a way to continue and pursue this project without raising taxes? Because I fully believe there are solutions to the problems of this city and goals without raising taxes. And for that reason, I felt compelled to run for city council, on which I am. David Niffen, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tony Cappas.
Good evening, council. I'm Tony Cappas, 501 Eckford. And to be honest with you, I stand here beside, in front of you without anything to say. I had a lot of things to tell council today, many of which were not very nice. Something occurred this morning and I was approached five times this morning, this afternoon, as I got here, of people that obviously care, people that have a vested interest in the city and its people. My, in my thinking, that was lost. So for those of you, and I won't even look, that came to me and said something, I appreciate your efforts. I will touch on two things very quickly and then at that point, I'll leave you. I firmly believe that if the police department is sent to a disturbance of some type, that they are required, or should be required, to make sure that if they give somebody a warning for working on a Sunday when they're not supposed to be, that they actually make sure the people leave. We had it occur across the street from us. The police was called in, they came over, they talked to the people that were working, they exchanged goodbyes, they waved, and people kept on working for two hours. And it's like, that's the only day of the week that I have quiet, no machinery, no nothing, Sunday. That's it. So to have the police, and then I received a letter from the police department that said, hey, we gave them a warning, all was good. All wasn't good. They didn't leave. And the police department didn't stick around to find out whether they left or not. And then the other, the last thing is, you seriously need to relook at your ordinances. If the head of the ordinance department cannot tell me exactly why an ordinance is there and what its restrictions are, there's a problem. He should be able to know that off the top of his head and say, this is why we do that, not for this reason that you're concerned about, but this is why we do that. And at least then I can get an understanding. Otherwise, there's chaos. So, again, I appreciate you guys. I do, very much. And I'm glad I could have a much nicer-toned presentation today. You have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Tony. Hey, so are we. Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents. Unfortunately, you arrived after the 15-minute window was closed.
I signed up. I just.
I think it was after the 15 minutes, but if council will consent, I, we'll go ahead and allow you to come forward, but it's, you're supposed to sign up by 7:45.
Well, I have a husband here, Christina Broomfield, 6301 Evans Wood Road, resident for 35-plus years. My husband was down here, signed me up, but then I was traveling from a funeral. So, thank you. Thank you for, first time I've been here in a long, long time. Hi, Lori. And I appreciate all of you because I've sat in your seat for two terms and then I went back to my life. So it's a lot of work. It's a lot of volunteer work. Thank you. I'm here, we have rental homes in Troy, and I have been mailed an estimate for replacing sidewalks in front of one of our rental homes, about just over $1,500. So I called and talked to those that could answer my questions and found out that, you know, we're responsible, the homeowners, to maintain sidewalks. And so just because I am who I am, I sat back and I went, hmm, we have $137 million, $112, whatever the number is, we have all these improvements. And I'm not sure, even as a city council member for those two terms, that I really knew that owners were responsible for easement. Obviously, keep it up, mow it, trim the bush, whatever. But to actually be hit with $1,500 to replace sidewalks, I guess I have a question. We all, did you know that? Y'all knew that? Someone's not shaking their head. Because what I, what I don't understand is I'm paying taxes and I, guys, you know, I get what taxes have to pay. I understand that. But I would think taxes would pay for sidewalks. You know, it happens to be in front of our house. It's not an HOA. I'm not part of something where I've agreed to pay for, you know, outdoor care. This is just a rental home. We've had it for years. We keep it up. And now I have to pay $1,500 to replace, I think, four or five little patches there. Help me understand why between my rental homes and my own home, I'm putting out close to $25,000 a year in taxes and property taxes, but that doesn't cover $1,500 sidewalk. Is that, like, can you answer?
If you're done speaking, we'll have an opportunity for reply and comment, but we don't do back and forth, which you probably remember. So I, if you're done.
You know, it's been a while.
All right, that's the three minutes up. I think we're probably there. All right. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't recognize you from the back.
Can y'all put that on the ballot to change that rule?
Okay, so let's talk about that for a second. That's been a policy for a long time. Obviously, when a home is built, the homeowner and construction company pays to build those sidewalks. The city doesn't actually ever pay for sidewalk installation unless it's on public thoroughfare, is my understanding. But is there been, there hasn't been a policy change as it's related to sidewalk repair. I know we're on a 12-year cycle. I see Kurt back there can talk maybe about the specifics of it, but there, how long has that policy been in effect?
For as long as I've been here, which is almost 30 years.
Right. And certainly, the city pays for sidewalk repair in front of your home if it's their city trees that have done the damage with roots. Is it all right if Kurt just speaks to that policy briefly?
Sure.
It's a good educational component. I agree with you because people don't often know about it until they get some spray painted dots on their sidewalk squares and then they get a bill or a notice saying either fix it yourself or the city will fix it and bill. So let's start with that one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Ordinances were revised last 2002 and then again in 2008 to address this. The philosophy is sidewalks that abut a residential property is likely going to be used by that resident or the surrounding residents. We often use an example that, you know, someone who lives in the, in the south, east corner of city Troy may never walk on a sidewalk in the northwest corner of the city of Troy. So therefore, they shouldn't be held responsible for covering the cost. There are communities that do have a dedicated millage or, or dedicated capital funding source that would pay for sidewalks. Here in the city of Troy, however, as mentioned, that the resident is responsible for the sidewalk and its defects. There are situations where a resident is not responsible, such as corner lots. The resident is only responsible for the sidewalk that is on the addressed side of the house. The other corner of the house, they're only responsible for the sidewalk that crosses their driveway. Residents are also responsible for the driveway approach that's in the right of way to keep that well-maintained. And residents that back up to major thoroughfares or even address major thoroughfares as a resident is not responsible for the cost of that. And that's because a lot of times those sidewalks are damaged by utility vehicles that use it as staging areas. So we've taken the responsibility. On average, our sidewalk program right now is a million dollars. On average, we get anywheres from 40% to 60% of that reimbursed back to the city because those are residential responsibility sidewalk defects. We do give opportunity. We give well-in-advanced notification to the residents that a sidewalk defect has been identified. That is, like Mayor Baker said, on a 12-year, approximately 12-year rotation, where we actually go out and we inspect that square mile. Residents are notified. They're given an opportunity. The city does hire, through a competitive bid process, a contractor. We require that contractor to offer a two-year warranty and we give them that price upfront. So they know if they choose to have the city go ahead with the work, they know exactly what they would be invoiced if they do that. The nice thing about that is, one is, it's in volume, right? We usually get very competitive pricing for that sidewalk. Two is, we manage that two-year warranty. So if anything comes up, we'll go ahead and take care of that with the contractor. It's oftentimes, unless you have a uncle or maybe a relative in the concrete business, it's really unlikely that you're going to be able to get it done cheaper than what the city's, city's offered. We do other options. We do allow raising for trips, or raising for sunken to save on some costs, but the resident would have to hire that. So I know that's pretty long-winded. That's our sidewalk program in a nutshell. Again, the capital fund, it funds about 40% to 60% of that program of the city responsible areas.
Thank you. Any sidewalk questions for Kurt? Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you. Kurt, remind me, if something is identified as a trip hazard by a resident or by the city, is that then the city's responsibility?
So if the, if outside of our normal 12-year rotation inspection, if a resident calls us and identifies a trip hazard, we're out there pretty quickly and we do a temporary patch. We'll put some asphalt down to mitigate the hazard. That goes on what we call our scattered list and that's done usually every year or maybe every other year, depending on that, how big that list is. It depends on the defect that caused the trip step. If it's the city tree and the roots raised it, causing, the city's going to pick up the cost. If it's a tree on private property causing the sidewalk to raise, that's going to be the resident responsibility.
Okay, thank you, Kurt.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Not so much a question, but a comment about your comments, is that, yes, about your, getting your uncle or your friend, they still got to be licensed, they still have to be inspected. And to support, one of many hats I wear, as a real estate broker, I can tell you that most of the communities do not pay for the sidewalks because you go to closing and there's a special assessment that they didn't pay the sidewalk fee, right? So it's very common.
Yes. And thank you for mentioning the, if you hire your own contractor. You're absolutely correct. Anything over 50 square feet, which is about two slabs of sidewalk, still requires the contractor to pull the permit, still has to get inspected, still has to be approved. Yes.
Honestly, Christina, I learned about it when I had $600 in slabs to replace myself about 10 years ago. So we could probably, I think it's on our website, the information, but maybe a social media. We do a lot of diginos in this city. That might not be a bad thing to share. I'm sure there's other places too. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
There might be some other comments. I wanted to address a couple of things quickly myself. First, I also discovered the ghost bond page on our city website that says the bond is $112 million. And I reached out to the city manager and our communications director. My understanding, there is a separate bond proposal page that has the correct information. I think it's, it was a Google cache issue essentially that was keeping it in search engines. So that is being dealt with first and foremost. But there is a clear $137 million bond request page on the city website. The issue regarding the burger truck, City Attorney Bloom?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. And so this is, this is one where we do have a chapter that is dedicated. It's Chapter 49. The title of the ordinance is the Mobile Food Vending Unit. So again, it's, it's clear that in Chapter 49, there is no procedure for there to be a variance. And one of the reasons for this is because you don't want these food trucks competing with your brick and mortar establishments in, in the city. And so, again, it was something, we did design it, we did present it to council, we recommended it so that you could have some food, you know, so that it was more for, like, to be at an event or to be at a graduation party. It was never intended to be in a, as a permanent location. It's, the ordinance is very clear. I'm sorry if the purchase was done without reading the chapter, Chapter 49, but there is really no process for there to be a variant. Council, of course, can always amend its ordinances. I don't think that that is something that, that city administration would recommend. I don't want to speak for city management, but again, this was designed to provide a little more flexibility, but not to have a food truck competing with our brick and mortar establishments.
I think that's my, my concern is that you're unique in that you're essentially an arm of High Score, which is not what a mobile food truck and our ordinance is designed to deal with, right? Where if you were traveling to different locations throughout the city, I think it fits perfectly. But our ordinance is designed not for somebody that is going to stay permanently in the same. same location, because if you're permanently in the same location, you're not a mobile truck, you're, and then, but you're subject to different regulations and zoning and permits, I would imagine. So I don't personally have an appetite to change our ordinance because I don't think that's good policy to deal with a one-off. But I'm frustrated with your concern because I understand where you're coming from, and I don't know, absent a variance, and I understand we don't do variance for ordinances, I don't know if there's any potential other fix. And I can't unfortunately have a back and forth. You're welcome to stick around. This meeting probably isn't going to go much longer, to be honest. If you want to chat for a little bit, I'm sure anybody on staff or we could as well. But that's where I'm at on that. I don't know if somebody else wanted to speak to that. Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask City Attorney Bloom, I know we don't create ordinances in a vacuum. How similar is this to what other cities have? Is this very common?
Well, actually, we, and City Clerk Dixon actually took on most of the responsibility of doing the research from other cities, and so perhaps she can provide some added insight as well.
When this ordinance was drafted, we took samples from a variety of cities from across the state. Not all cities fit what we would be doing. So for example, Ferndale would have, they have a downtown area that has a lot of food trucks in it, but we used locations that would be closer to how we operate, where we kind of more spread out. And the language in our ordinance is very similar to kind of a combination of a bunch of other ordinances.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
When was that done? Because I don't think it was.
That was.
In the eight years I've been on council. I don't recall that.
It's 2018. I want to say off the top of my head.
Oh, okay.
2018 or 19, something like that.
Okay, so we're.
I feel like it was more recent than that.
Like I said, it's off the top of my head. But it was recent. It wasn't 20 years ago or something like that. It was recent.
Councilmember Holdrick?
I can appreciate the challenge you're having, too, there. We were really thoughtful about our ordinance, and I want to assure you of that, that I can remember the research, I can remember kind of looking around on my own, doing my own homework, and there was a lot of logic and thoughtful care that went into it. When we grant variances or make a change for one situation, it can offset all the other situations that we're trying to make sure we're managing, especially protecting our brick-and-mortar restaurants, which we have so many of here. I remember the word "mobile" being key, and so I just want to assure you that I really remember us slogging through this and thinking about it very, very carefully and trying to do right by the entire community and how business is conducted here. I don't know if offline, there might be some sort of solution, but I just, I just want you to be assured that we did think about it very, very carefully at the time we drafted it.
Thank you. Any other comments or reply to any of the public comment?
I have some.
Councilmember Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address Mr. Colby's concern about the cryptosporidium and the pools. I don't know if we, do we sample our pools or anything to check for?
I was told yes when I had previous meetings with Brian. I don't know the frequency, but it's routinely tested our pools.
Okay. So that's, you know, hopefully that answers your question. I don't know.
It's a good question, something else to consider. Councilmember Chamberlain?
To follow, because I actually did submit once today Q and A, kind of what is the procedures? Because I am an active swimmer in the indoor and outdoor pools, and there, and you see them, you often do see them testing the chlorine. Whether or not they are testing for the cryptosporidium, I'm not sure. That is actually a great question, and maybe we can connect with Commissioner Ann Erickson-Gault and see if there's a connection to the county commission, the county health department to ask about that. Maybe that's something we can look into. But I do know they test, I see them test, and I appreciate them doing that stuff.
Frank, could you get us an update report on what our testing looks like for the pools?
Absolutely.
I think that's a good question. Councilmember Holdrick?
Appreciate a number of you that came forward with questions, observations about our bond discussion in the community. It's all great questions. Yes, I have seen the dialogue on Nextdoor and am watching. The community is in its, in an active role of learning what we're asking for and why we're doing it. I share concerns about misinformation being out there very quickly. I would ask fellow residents to make sure that they really have researched and understand before putting misinformation out. It's like playing whack-a-mole. Yes, the city will be doing informational sessions. You know, as individuals, we can spend hours trying to tackle each comment, and it becomes, it becomes very difficult to do. And that has been the challenge anytime we've had such an election in the city of Troy, dating back to the mid-2000s, when an operating millage cap ended out being voted in, and then when we needed relief during the downturn, as per charter, after that cap was voted in, we went for an ask, we, I wasn't on council, but we as a community, there was an ask for an operating millage increase that was denied. Since then, we've worked very, very carefully, the entire community and the city staff, over a number of city managers, with a really, really fiscally conservative budget as a Alex, your dad and I worked in the same building, met my husband there. I have wedding pictures in front of the old Fisher-Bodding Building, so it's kind of fun to hear you talk about that. Also very conservative, and I share your concerns about protecting our fund balance. I agree with more of what you said than you might think, and it's why I feel the bond ask is so critical as we go forward. Anyone who's serving on council after November, regardless, you know, we have the vote, if it's a no, there will be very, very careful work that has to go forward. If it's a yes, there will be very, very careful work that goes forward. It's a very conservative ask, given that we haven't gone for an ask since 1999. I would encourage, when there's informational sessions offered, that folks go and probe the questions with as open a mind of understanding as possible, because this has been years in the works to pull together. There were some other miscellaneous comments that came, but I think these are best addressed. You know, I don't have all my notes. I have thick notes over a number of years of working and recognizing the capital challenges. And I don't know that necessarily when it comes from a council member that people think it has credibility. So I would, I would encourage folks to watch for information settings, informational sessions that will come up. There's one that's a very casual one coming up, City Manager Nastazi, that's this?
Wednesday at 9:00 a.m.
You can have coffee with him, have an honest conversation, share your views. In terms of kitchen-table conversations, I've had a ton of those as well. We have folks that are recognizing the needs of a functionally obsolete library building who have watched us throw millions of dollars at that building. It is so wasteful. If I were the residents, my fellow residents, I'd be frustrated that we hadn't addressed this earlier. Face the music and recognize that this building is falling apart and does not serve an academically-oriented community of this size at this point. I encourage folks to look at the strategic planning work that went into this. Help us share information accurately. You may decide in the end to vote no. I'm fully aware of what it's like to be a senior watching your pennies. I'm one of them. As a senior who plans to age in this community, I want to protect the vitality of this community as well. I have lived in a community that did not, that actively chose not to. It did not go well in that community, and that's why I came and found a seat at the table to help make sure we take things, take care of things holistically. I'm happy to talk more. Our emails are on the city webpage. I appreciate the passion, and I appreciate that, why don't they just do, or have you ever thought of this? They're all fair and solid questions. Ask them robustly as we keep working with information sessions going forward. That's what it takes to have a really strong community and stay strong. Welcome the involvement, welcome the engagement, and I really appreciate the questions coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holdrick. On that note, Frank, you mentioned your Troy Talks is Wednesday, 9 o'clock. I think it's at Tim Horton's, but I don't remember which one.
Yeah, I think it's 5:07 East Big Beaver.
Yeah, it's that one. I had a meeting with city manager earlier today, and I asked the very question, okay, when are we releasing dates for informational sessions, town halls? What's the plan? Because I had a feeling tonight people were going to ask about them, and our community wants to know, and we want to have that information out there. I know Courtney, our communications director, is working on scheduling all of those right now. Did you want to add anything, just that they are forthcoming and they'll be well-publicized?
I just had, like, an hour before we started, a meeting with Courtney, our communications director. We're finalizing a schedule. We'll be pushing that out. That's going to have, you know, the town hall meetings, we're going to be hitting different events in town, like Troy Days, the different concerts, fire department open houses, things like that. We want to ensure that we get all the information out, all the questions answered, so our citizens can make an informed decision with whatever they decide. So we're going to be pushing that out shortly. We're also going to have a frequently asked questions page. We've been gleaning a lot of questions, so we're putting all that together. That will also be on the website, and we'll be pushing stuff out on social media, so we're all on the same page. So have a little patience. We're working on it. My team's working hard, so.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you. To follow up on that, I was going to ask that question during public comment. Most people know that I ran very much because I care deeply about community engagement. And I can say for myself and my colleagues, look at David Hamilton, we actually spent time, we spent hours with a group of neighbors, seniors on fixed income in our neighborhood, just listening, asking questions. I had those tabletop conversations, like, two hours around a kitchen table, talking, listening. If it was me, I would have done even more because that's how I care about it. So with that, I was going to ask more about how are we reaching out to the residents? And what I hear from what you say, because the best practice is to meet people also where they are, not to ask them to come to Troy Talks when they're working or they're taking care of kids or a town hall, but are we going to have a booth in the library? Are we going to have a standing booth or informational opportunities in the community center? And, you know, what are more ways that we're going out so we're getting all segments of the population? It's not just daytime events that a lot of people cannot make.
Yeah, we're going to have it different times, different locations. We want to reach as many people as we can within the community, so we want to make sure we're accessible, that we have that information not only for social media but in person at these various different locations, that we were, I just got the rough draft today, we're finalizing that, making sure we can use these different locations, that they're available for these dates, like at the Nature Center. We have, of course, the community center, which is great, we have a lot of room and things there, but another idea was like the different HOAs, reaching out to them and having one big event for them, maybe at the community center, so people interested can all go there. We're going to be meeting with seniors, talking with them directly. Like I said, the Troy Talks, anybody, it's very informal. Anybody can come up and talk. I answer all the questions, and if I don't have the answer, I get your information, I get right back with you. So I have a wonderful team that works really hard, and we'll make sure we have that communication back and forth with all the residents.
Frank, do you think by our next council meeting in two weeks, we can have a report showing, is that enough time to get these things scheduled or at least a rough outline?
I think it'll be before then. We're going to start pushing stuff out pretty quickly. We're just finalizing stuff now, so I don't want to wait another two weeks. I want to get it out there and get the information out so people get the answers they're looking for.
That would be great. Maybe it could also be a report in the council agenda for those who may just be looking at our council agendas, even if it's out before then, if it makes sense to do that. I just think there is a lot of, among the seven of us, there's a lot of questions as to, we're hearing from our residents, and we want to be able to give them a clear calendar, a clear understanding of what information the city's providing.
Absolutely. We'll make sure we get that done.
Yeah, I mean, I also wanted to add to that. I mean, I'm talking to a lot of people, and I'm hearing a lot of misinformation essentially. So I think sooner we give all the information people need, can make a decision. Things like, you know, I hear, why do we need a new library building? And one of the most convincing answers is if those who actually visited the library building, and I know we are open to anybody that wants to schedule a visit, I believe it's still on, correct? I mean, so just be able to tell them that we, you know, I mean, as many people knows that you can come to the library, look at the interior, and make your own decision whether or not you need a new library, I think that would be wonderful. So I know, we know, all of us know, people in the, some of us know, city administration knows, but I don't think an average citizen knows that we can go to the library and look at the condition of the library and give them a right way answer why we need a new library building.
Yeah, always welcome residents to go to the library, they can see for themselves. That frequently asked questions page, it's going to be multiple pages. We've been gathering those along those lines and others, so it'll be one central location for everyone to be able to get those answers. And of course, when we're doing these different events, we can answer them in person, too, so.
On the flip side, it was only two weeks ago that we approved ballot language, and I understand that you could only move forward once you had that approved language by us, and there was some question as to how that would go. So I want to remind all of us that that is, yes, two weeks is two weeks, but we understand that we just made a decision for you to have something to educate on two weeks ago. And there is a webpage already up on the city website, and I can't look at my phone to tell you what it is because our rules prohibit it, but is it troyammy.gov/2025bond? Could somebody who can look at their computer tell me if that's right? Because that does have the.
On the homepage as well.
On the homepage, there's a link to it, but that gives you, it has links to the meetings where we've discussed this bond issue. I believe a good list of them is there, where you can watch the discussions we've had. It, of course, has the calculator function, which will show what your property taxes, how they will be affected by it if you approve this bond. And I imagine that's where it will be the landing page for all of this other additional information moving forward. But that does exist now.
Yes, and it'll be very easy to navigate. We're going to put it all in one area, and people can click on it, and like, the FAQ page will come up with all the different questions and whatnot. We'll have all the dates for all the different events and schedule on there also. So we're pushing out as quick, as quickly as we can.
Okay. Any other comments? I have one more, but did you want to say something?
I just had one more general comment, which I pointed out at the last meeting as well, but I don't, I don't know that everybody saw our last meeting. One of, one of the facts in this mix is, and I'm looking at people in the audience that have been around a while and looked at things here, we like to think that the private sector brings very creative thinking to municipal work, and that's true. There are good ideas that come. There are municipal financing laws that we have to follow. One of the people in place in our city administration is someone who does, it's our CFO, who has private and public sector experience that he's bringing to the discussion. So those that are very, very numbers-oriented and like to dive into the data, I can, I urge you and welcome you to continue sending your questions in. Look for opportunities at these coffees. I'm sure CFO Melzick will probably be at a number of those or would be willing to be. If that's the kind of, kind of conversation that you need, he is just so terrific at explaining the municipal financing aspects of our work. And it is different than businesses. There's certain things we have to have in our accounting practices, and, you know, I urge that understanding or developing that understanding because the more everybody understands how it works, the better we'll make collective decisions going forward. However you vote, just really welcome the opportunity to be informed. It sounds like we have very caring residents who really want to look out for the future of Troy for all the right reasons. We all share that common bond. Let's do it with the best information in each of our heads as we can, is, I guess, my, what I'm imploring, and take advantage of these good people that have been working this through. this through and, and have the knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. One last reply on our public comment is to Mr. Kappas. You were very, very kind this evening, but I actually want to call out a little further. Our city manager, Frank Nastasi, and our assistant city manager, Chris Wilson, I know both went to you and talked to you, because they, one of the reasons I'm so thankful we have both of them in, in city hall is that they do have a customer service-based attitude and outlook, and so they, they knew you were here, they knew why you were here, and they wanted to make sure your issues were addressed. And I appreciate you calling that out and recognizing that for what it is, and I, they don't like to be called out, but I called them out for what they did, because I want people in the city to know that, that those are the people we've put into the city manager's office for that very reason. So thank you for sharing what you shared in spite of everything, and it's, it's appreciated and noted. So that concludes those that assigned, oh no, that was not us signed up, but that was us concluding our responses and replies to those who spoke in public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals this evening, there are a few reports. Did anybody on council have a comment related to any of the reports? All right, council comments. I know some of them I think have already been addressed, but additional council comments. Mayor Portem, go ahead.
I got a, I got a few call-outs. I do like to call out. City manager Frank and Kurt, your response was so quick for that Sylvan Glen Park, I really appreciate that, that you took care of what could potentially be in a, a serious situation. We've got a really great price structure going in, and even though they put up barriers and stuff, parents were not paying attention to their kids, letting them go in there, and there was still concrete under these play structures, and I used a little bit of my lost control information, and those guys were right on it, so I appreciate that. I wanted to call out, I love going to Troy Historic Village, and I know the Underground Railroad exhibit is currently going on through August twenty-eighth, and this one was really important to me, I think. I know we're always looking for people to go into the public safety, fire or police department, and I saw that there were four students that won a scholarship studying public safety through a Satterfield First Responder Scholarship, so hopefully you guys got some future, future employees, so it was nice to read.
Thank you. Additional council comments? Councilor Chanda?
Yeah, I just wanted to take this time to congratulate the Barretier Temple for their fifty-year anniversary. Many of us from the council were there last weekend. They've been here for fifty years, I mean, we've been in the city for, as a city for seventy years, so fifty out of those seventy years they have been here, so they, you know, it's wonderful that the founders chose to call Troy their home, and they're right at the northwest corner of the city, the gateway to the city, as Mayor mentioned in that meeting, so I didn't think about it, but we are, it's actually in the corner of four different cities, actually, if you think about Rochester Hills, Auburn Hills, Bloomfield Hills, and Troy, so, and thanks for everyone who attended, and they appreciate it, everything the city does for us, for them, and obviously we appreciate everything they do for us, so, thanks.
Very good. Thanks, Councilor Chanda. Any other comments? All right, we don't have anyone signed up for public comment for items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy, and we don't have a closed session, so we are adjourned.